Okay, item number four is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit on property located at 9706 East 79th Place. This time I'm going to ask the clerk to perform the second reading on this item, please.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit subject to certain conditions to operate a residential care facility on property in the low-density residential R1 district, a property located at 9706 East 79th Place.
This time I'm going to reopen the public hearing. I'm going to ask if any of the board members wish to share any ex parte communication they may have had on this subject at this time. Mr. Van Beskirk.
I did have a discussion with the property owner and this will not affect my decision relative to my vote.
Okay, Mr. Ertz?
I've had a discussion with the Deborah and many neighbors in the area. It will not affect my vote.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Mock?
Yes, I also had a conversation with the owner and it would not affect my decision.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Benson, do you care to further our conversation regarding the application?
Yes, there's, just as a refresher, to remind you from the last meeting, the planning commission held a public hearing on this application and by a vote of six in favor and zero against, recommended approval of the application subject to the conditions stipulated in the ordinance. Also, since the last Board of Alderman meeting, a protest petition has been submitted by a number of neighboring property owners, staff. In the zoning ordinance, it stipulates that if a protest petition is submitted and contains signatures that comprise 30% of the land area within 185 feet of the subject property, it is to be considered a valid protest petition. Earlier today, we had an opportunity to finish reviewing the protest petition and determine that it did comprise 33.06% of the land area within 185 feet. So it is a valid protest petition. What that means for you all tonight is, under the zoning ordinance, in order to approve the application, it will require seven votes of the entire board. So seven of the 10 of, the 10 of you to approve the application are required. Also, at the last meeting, the question...
Mr. Benson, before you go on, I want to make sure I understand. Seven votes are required to approve the application?
If the application can be, is to be approved, it will require seven or more votes.
Okay, thank you.
At the last Board of Alderman meeting, a question was asked in regards to the adult daycare, more specifically, the amount of traffic the adult daycare at 9704 East 79th Place generates, which is also owned and operated by the applicant. And looking back at the staff report for that application that went to the Board of Zoning Adjustment in 2005, the applicant stated that there would be, on average, seven trips per day generated by the, by the adult daycare. Also, just as a reminder, in the planning commission staff report that is in your packet, it outlines the various factors that are to be considered for any conditional use permit. And again, this is a land use issue, not an operational issue, because the state of Missouri governs and regulates the operational side of this type of facility. The factors regulating the land use application, or the conditional use permit application in this case, include the stability, integrity of the various zoning districts, the conservation of property values, protection against fire and casualties, observation of general police regulations. This includes the standards that are stipulated in the zoning ordinance for this type of facility, which is a residential, or excuse me, a long-term care facility. Those stipulations or performance standards include that no more than 16 total residents at any one time. Again, the applicant's only proposing six in this facility. B, that the applicant must demonstrate that the use will be consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood by presenting information regarding the number of residents, number of employees, number of additional vendors or service providers anticipated to visit the home, the total number of vehicle trips to and from the home per day, at least 500 square feet for every five residents, or 600 square feet in the case of six residents, of contiguous compact outdoor recreation area in the rear yard. And then also that the rear yard must be fenced with a fence of at least 60 inches in height. Also, parking, off-street parking must be provided to meet the parking needs. No alterations or additions shall be made to the dwelling or accessory structures which will alter the residential appearance of the dwelling. No traffic shall be generated between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM in the greater volumes than would normally be expected in a residential neighborhood. No residential care facility may be located within 1,200 feet of another residential care facility, or a dwelling used for group living, large or small, or as measured from the nearest property line to nearest property line. Another factor, or the next factor to be considered, is prevention of traffic congestion, the promotion of traffic safety and orderly parking of motor vehicles, promotion of safety of individuals and property, provision for adequate light and air, provision of overcrowding and excessive intensity of land uses, provision for public utilities and schools, invasion by inappropriate uses, the value, type, and character of existing or authorized improvements in land uses, encouragement of improvements in land uses in keeping with overall planning, and lastly, provision for orderly and proper renewal, development, and growth. Again, those are contained in the staff report that's in your packet that was provided to the planning commission. At this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well.
Okay, are there questions of Mr. Benson before we invite the applicant to speak? Okay. Deborah, would you like to make your presentation to the, and I apologize by calling you Deborah, I'm sorry. And I'm going to be more cognizant at this time of making sure I get names and addresses of people that speak, so help me. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Thomas. I reside at 9704 East 79th Place, and I also own the property at 9706 East 79th Place. What I'm here for today is ask for a conditional use permit to operate a long-term care facility, which will only, we would only have six people caring for them 24 hours a day, where they would live in and it would become their home. I'm asking for this because this is something that I really desire to do. It's in my heart, I love it, and I don't know anything else to do. That's what I want to do. I want to make a difference, a difference and become someone, since I'm a resident of Raytown, Missouri, I would like to participate of being some, something that is acceptable in the town of Raytown, Missouri. Some of the things that we will be doing will be, we will be caring for them, we will, basically, we will prepare the meals there so it won't be traffic for us, meals being brought in or anything like that. We will also have, maybe, sometimes we have to have hospice, will be a trip, sometimes they come twice a week, sometimes they come three times a week. The other things is bathing and helping them with their daily activities and things like that. It's, it's really more a home setting instead of institutionalized, which a lot of families are looking forward to now in time because it gives us more time to spend with them and care for them. Because you're not having a big group, it's a smaller group, it's a smaller atmosphere, and it's a home atmosphere. So that's something that I've been yearning for, for a long, long time, so I will not give up. I want to continue to do this. I hope that everything works out okay so that I can start back operating to bring some loved ones here to Raytown to become Raytown citizens also. Anybody has any question, feel free to answer.
Okay, are there questions of the applicant before we invite the public up to speak? Okay, we're going to, may I have you back up here in a little bit? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call upon, and I apologize, I don't get the last name, Brenda, if you'd like to come forward. And please forgive me for using first names. And then I think Roseland is next. Did I get that name right?
Hello, my name is Brendan Anawki. I live at 10013 West 52nd Street in Miriam, Kansas. And I'm here on behalf of Deborah and the Triple TLC. My aunt was, is 94 years old, and she started needing help and was in the hospital in a rehab facility, which would have been transitional for her to go to a nursing home. I heard about Deborah's facility and found out that it was a closed setting, and checked it out. It made, it made me feel very comfortable. Because my aunt doesn't have children, and she really didn't know a lot of people. So to be in a closed home setting, it made her feel comfortable. So we left her at Deborah's facility, and that's where she stayed until she had to move out. We felt comfortable there for her, and we'd like for her to, to go back and to stay with Deborah. Deborah's place was clean, it was neat, it was a home-like setting, and a good atmosphere. And my aunt was always in good spirits, always clean, her hair was done, her nails were done, and she always was in very good spirits. My prayer today is that she be approved, have the assisted living facility. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Roseland? I hope I haven't. Be sure to correct me on the name when you come. Okay, thank you. Drafton? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I don't really plan to say a whole lot because that's my girlfriend, she's like my sister, and basically, I'm just here to enforce exactly what she was saying. It's good to know when the family is taken care of and know that they're loved and treated properly. That's basically all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you for coming out tonight. Andy, you asked to speak again on this item too? Ms. Drafton, we're going to need your address too, please. If you could just give it to the clerk there, I'd appreciate it. Good evening, Andy.
Good evening again. I'm kind of curious, allegedly, there's a petition against us. What does the petition say?
I don't have, I don't have a copy of the petition, so...
It seems to me that the neighbors do have some input into this, and I think that should have been read. But I am not a neighbor or part of that area, but I'll add this. When I suffered my head injury in 1990, I was confined to what was called a transitional living center, which is basically the same type of facility as this, where there was a, I think about six to eight people. And we lived together and functioned as a family, and one of us cooked meals every night. And, you know, it's to help us out. And actually, since this is apparently a senior facility, when we get older, we're generally forced to go to old age home. Most people can't afford this, so we really, you know, really need someplace where we can go that's affordable, clean, pleasant place to live, home-type environment, type of place I'd like to go when I'm forced to go. And I think it's a benefit to the community to have a place for senior citizens. And besides that, you know, there's going to be people coming in, they're bound to stop and shop in Raytown, buy gas, buy groceries or whatever, going to or from, maybe buy gifts. I think it's a benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Mr. Wellert, your opinion on the reading of the petition, sir?
It would be valid, and I'm willing to read the petition into the record. It's quite brief.
If you please do so.
We, the undersigned or opposed to the Board of Alderman, issuing a conditional use permit for a residential care facility at 9706 East 79th Place, Raytown, Missouri. This is a residential area that should not be used commercial establishments. We feel allowing this CUP would have a negative impact on the character of the neighborhood. Petition consists of several pages, but that is the two paragraphs that appear at the top of each of the pages that contains the signatures that Mr. Benson mentioned in his report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now, are there others in the audience that would like to speak on this matter to the Board of Alderman? Please come forward, and we'll need your name and address, please.
My name is Bethany. I live at 7912 Overton Drive, which is across the street from the property you mentioned. I would like to say, first of all, as we begin to age, we begin to use our usefulness, and those that think about us when we do get older need to be appreciated. They take the time to be with us, care for us, and for ourselves. And I think the thing that my neighbor's doing is a good thing, because everybody needs attention, everybody needs love. I have a wife that worked in the industry over 20 years, who herself, right now, is disabled. And if it wasn't for the fact that people like Deborah, they take the time to help people, and have spent their life helping people, it, it just doesn't make sense. So I think the thing that she's trying to do is good for our community, it's good for our relatives, it's good for our loved ones. I'd like to compliment her on what she's doing.
Thank you, Mr. Bethany. Another lady, please? You can go ahead, go ahead and queue up over here if you want to also.
To all of, everyone, I'm Linda Bowman, and I am the nurse for Dr. Nevada Lee, who has serviced the elderly people in that home for about the last six years. And she has a statement that she wants to make, and so what I'm going to do, per the permission of attorney, is to dial her up on the phone and she can speak to you live. Is that okay? Okay.
Technology hit City Hall.
Dr. Lee is on a well-deserved vacation. She's in New York, and so she's going to speak to you now. Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Okay, you're on speakerphone, and you are talking to the City Hall, the Group of Aldermen, and the people to hear about the conditional licensing for TLC.
Okay. So shall I just make my statement, or does someone have questions for me?
She's doing it.
Go ahead and make your statement, and then they may have questions. Go ahead.
All right. Well, my name is Nevada Lee. I'm, this is, is Nevada Lee, MD Geriatric Internal Medicine at 6317 Evanston in Raytown, Missouri. I've been devoted to serving the seniors of Raytown since 1993, and that's because Raytown has the highest percentage of elderly people in the entire metropolitan area. And it's just for that reason that someone has to pick up the ball for elder care. Raytown sits in a good position to be a model for geriatric care throughout the United States. But since Raytown has no hospital, no anchor for health care in the community, we really have to be creative and do things ourselves. At least we can offer alternative levels of care that some other communities don't have, because we're going to need them all. We'll need skilled nursing, we'll need residential care, we'll need assisted living, and we'll also need home care. TLC has given many of my patients and their families the option of having safe and loving care in a home when their own homes were not an option. And this has been throughout all the stages of their care, from their initial disability and often until their death. Instead of looking for ways to marry Triple TLC, we as a community should be asking what we can do to help TLC thrive as a fundamental resource for all of our sick and all of our demented and all of our disabled. We can help Triple TLC to become a model of great home-like care when home care is not an option. So Debbie Thomas is actually a blessing for this community, and I really feel that we need to give her our full support and ask what we can do to help make this a reality and to keep her in business. And that's basically all I have to say.
Tell her thank you.
They said thank you, Dr. Lee.
No, I would say probably not.
No questions, Dr. Lee.
Okay, let's figure out how to make this work, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Thank her for us, for calling.
Okay, thank you.
They said thank you.
Very good.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Tolson, and I live at 11806 East 57th Street, Kansas City, Missouri. And my mother has been a client of Triple TLC Adult Daycare for approximately a year. I'll say that I probably am in a unique situation because I belong to what the Alzheimer's community refers to as the sandwich generation, kind of sandwiched in between still raising my own children and now taking care of my mother. Ms. Thomas has been a godsend for me, not only during the daytime to look after my mother, to make sure that she's safe, and make sure that she's eating, and to assist me in any type of hygiene or life skills care that she needs. But in addition, she also will assist me in the evening times when I'm running my son to baseball practice or football practice or whatever he has. And so it's been twofold for me. It's been able to allow me to continue to work and then also to continue to take care of my mother in my home for as long as I can, and then also take care of my own family. And so without, without her, I don't know what I would have done. I've visited many different adult daycares in the area and found that a lot of the facilities had younger adults with developmental delays and mental retardation, rather than elderly people who are able to sit around, talk, play games and things like that, which was what I was looking for. One of the places that was closest to me was all the way in Brookside, which was inconvenient for me as far as getting to work in a timely manner, because I have to arrive at work at 7:30 in the morning. And so because she was so willing to work with my particular situation, and in addition to having a very clean facility, being able to relate to my mother very well, because my mother is young, she had early onset Alzheimer's disease. And so she and Ms. Deborah are actually pretty close in age, and so they have some of the things that they can relate to, as well as some of the other people who attend the adult daycare too. And I would just hope that we can come to a conclusion where I'm able to still utilize those services.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Michelle Williams. I reside at 7908 Evanston. I feel that with, Mrs. Thomas has a very great desire and ambition of the seniors. I myself had dealt with it with my mother, paralyzed on the left side, very hard job that it is, staying on top of things, keeping people... A lot of times, I didn't even know that Mrs. Thomas had a business going on a couple houses down from me, and because I could have utilized her at that time. But there were times that I would come to her home, and I could see the compassion, the love, the desire. This woman is dedicated, very focused on what she's doing. And I would come sometimes unannounced. I could see they're happy, love, always clean. And that means a lot, because I am a helping nurse myself, and I've worked at various different other facilities, and I've seen that that has been an issue with them not being clean and not really having a genuine interest and love and desire for them. And with that being a very... You're finding a facility that has a genuine interest and does love, passion is there. That's what we need to do. We need to keep those facilities and those doors open. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
My name is Mindy Zager, and I'm at 9803 East 79th Place. So I am on the same street as Deborah's facility. I've lived with her, or near her, for 11 years. We've been there 11 years. I think she's been there maybe nine. And I have not seen any increase in traffic when my children and I take walks up and down the street. Deborah has always said hi, and we've gone inside and visited. And she's always very welcoming with my daughter, who loves, you know, babies and older people. And she's gone there and helped her do their nails and has read stories with them. Deborah's, we call her Ms. Deborah, so if I slip by, but Ms. Deborah. Her place is clean, it's, it's a house, it's a, everybody is always very happy. I just, I don't see, being on the street myself, I've not, I would not have known that she was caring for people in her house without maybe talking to her on the street. So I, for me, living there, raising my three children, I, I don't, I don't see a problem. So I just wanted to let you know.
Very good. Thanks, Ms. Zager.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Donna Campbell, and I live at 37 Southwest Harbor Circle, Summit, Missouri. And how I met Deborah is that my mother-in-law has Alzheimer's, and that I went to the Kansas City Alzheimer's, and they gave me a listing. I called all around, and she was the only person that had a home setting for her. So she, I asked, and she, daycare for my mother. But I'm looking for later on for her, to keep her in home, because she's to the setting, and she's 91 right now. So this would be actually excellent for her to be. So I hope that all of you look in of keeping, are opening up the assisted living. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Reverend Faith White, Jr., pastor of Mount Sinai Baptist Church. I live at 5739 South Benton Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri. And I'm here to say a word on behalf of Ms. Deborah. She cared for my wife for some times, and I used as a daycare, because of my work, I wasn't able to take care of my wife, and I was able to take her there each day and leave her, and she received the best of care. The only reason she's not there now is because my grandson moved in with me, and he's taking care of her. But I recommend Deborah very highly. She does a real good job taking care of people, and I, I visited while there were other people there, and, and the people just love her, and she does a mighty fine job of taking care of the people. I think that's about all I have.
Thank you, pastor.
All right.
Evening, sir.
My name is George Yocum. I reside at 9806 East 79th Terrace.
Last name again?
Yocum.
Okay.
Y-O-C-U-M. And I want to voice my opposition to this permit. I'm a homeowner, and I came into Raytown, and I understood everything in my neighborhood. All the homes were single-family. Concerned about property values, how the character of the neighborhood is changing, so I just wanted to vote my opposition.
All right, thank you, sir. Evening, Ms. Slapia.
Good evening. Barb Slapia, 9310 East 80th Terrace, Raytown, Missouri. I'd like to thank the mayor and the board for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I've lived at the address above for 22 years. This is my neighborhood. This is my neighborhood, and less than a quarter of a mile from this facility. And what I want to talk to you about tonight is the land use. We've heard about the quality of care. We've heard about compliance issues. We've heard about a lot of things. We haven't talked about land use, which is the purpose for the conditional use permit. Does this fit with the neighborhood? Is this good for the neighborhood? We're talking about operating a second business that would be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in a residential area. That doesn't fit. We have an ordinance on the books, I believe. I sat on this board when that came about, I want to say maybe 2007. This board decided to enact legislation that would keep daycare facilities, short-term care, long-term care, residential care, 1,200 feet from each other, specifically for the purpose of not diluting a neighborhood with care facilities. I can't tell you why the state of Missouri wants to consider two houses at two separate addresses, one facility. It makes no sense to me. But if indeed this board allows that to take place and would grant this permit, what keeps another property from being purchased? Down the street? Across the street? I don't know what the state of Missouri is going to consider that, but I would say to you, these are two separate properties. The residents have become used to having one property that is a daycare facility in the neighborhood. If you allow this second one, that will increase 20% of that side of the block to commercial use as opposed to residential use. There are many places in the city that are zoned multifamily. Perhaps that's a better fit. I've gotten the petition that I did pass around. I spoke with a lot of the neighbors. We did not talk that much about care. Care was not the concern. The concern was for land use. I can tell you that according to the records from the city of Raytown, there were three ambulance calls there this past 12 months. If you would have what the testimony Ms. Thomas has said, that there's three people in that house, you're now going to multiply that by three. That would be nine. You could feasibly say that would be nine ambulance calls in one year. I don't think that's characteristic of the neighborhood either. The crime is increasing in Raytown, not only in my neighborhood, but every neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that has mixed families in it. We have families with small children that are outside playing with their children. We have senior citizens that are retired, that are home during the day, watching out for their neighbors. We have people like myself that are out walking in the neighborhood, constantly paying attention to what's going on. I'd like to see that type of integrity maintained, and I would like you to deny this conditional use permit. While I was out walking, I did, along with the petition, try to ascertain numbers in households to show you that also six people in a household or nine or 10 people, if you want to consider them one, is also not characteristic with the neighborhood. I've highlighted the areas in yellow that did sign the petition, and on there, there's a number that represents the number of occupants in that house, as best I could ascertain it from asking the people that live there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slapia. Okay. Yes, sir. I don't know if you can get over that cord or not, sir. If you can't, okay. Apparently not. We can also go around, I think, too, and get you through that one. Or bring a microphone to him.
I'm not a very good driver, am I? You're not going to answer that?
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Earl Brayban. I live 7914 Evanston Street. Lived there for 45 years. I think the issue here is not how good healthcare people are having, and I know they do have good healthcare. The issue here is are we to allow a business in our neighborhood which is residential? If we do, then somebody else can say, "Well, I'm going to repair cars, do them in my driveway. I'm going to do this," it permits. So this is my issue, and I thank you, board, and I'm sorry about running over your cord.
You're fine, sir. And thank you for serving, by the way. Thanks for keeping Steve Mock off the chair, too. Good to see you again. Larry?
My name is Lawrence Hayden. I live at 9704 East 80th Street. My only concern is, just like he stated, we're getting more commercial operations in residential areas, and I just hate to see it keep going that way. I've lived in Raytown a long time, and start looking around, and all of a sudden, in various areas, you remember being all residential. Seems to me like just a few years ago, and all of a sudden, it's more commercial. I would like to see my neighborhoods a residential.
Thanks, Larry. Okay, would anyone else in the audience like to address the board on this matter? Once, twice? No. I screwed up once before, Annie, and I've had my hand called on that. So once at the mic is all that we can allow. Thank you, though. Okay, I'm going to move on past the public comment section. I'm going to ask Mr. Benson if he has anything else to add at this time.
I have nothing more to add other than to reference the conditions stipulated in the ordinance and then the factors for consideration of conditional use permits to focus as a land use issue. So be happy to answer any questions otherwise.
Okay, any questions to Mr. Benson? Mr. Ertz?
Could we see a copy of the petition? I'll catch it when it comes by.
If we're ready to go to board discussion, I'd be glad to go ahead and close the public hearing and go to the board discussion if that's... Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing this time. I'm going to go straight into board discussion. So with that, we are now in discussion amongst the board. I've still got Mr. Ertz with the mic unless you want to yield to Mr. Pardue. Mr. Pardue.
Okay, I think before, personally, I feel more comfortable if we had our entire board here. Maybe it's a suggestion, if we're shooting for, you know, since we have the petition, I don't feel like we're giving a proper vote on this issue, whether we are for it or against it. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Still on discussion. Mr. Ertz, back to you.
I have a few comments. One, under the factors to be considered, you know, the first one is the stability and integrity of zoning districts. I believe, you know, this being zoned residential, that's one thing I believe that we're here to consider. The conservation of property values, I believe, is something we're considering on how this would help property values from the people in the neighborhood. I wanted to get into the traffic and ask a few questions about the number of people. I believe we heard, and I don't know where Ms. Thomas is right now, but I believe she is the resident of the home, so that would be, you would have your normal, right there is your normal residential use of the house, is her and her family in this house or the neighbor's house? I don't know which one. I couldn't catch which one she lived in.
She lives in 9704, which is the house adjacent immediately to the west.
The business next door.
She's in the house in which the adult daycare is operated from, which is adjacent property to the west.
Okay. Last week, we asked about the qualifications of the staff there, whether or not there was, is there a registered nurse on staff at all times? Or was that somebody that would be called? Is she still available?
That is something that'll be regulated and required by the state as far as the type of nursing skill levels required.
If one was there, one had to drive in. I'm just trying to get my hands around how many people will be coming to service these things, not from a health point of view at all. I'm just thinking, you know, is there an RN or an LPN that resides 24 hours a day at this residence? Or is that something that you would need for this? I'm just wondering.
Based on her application, there'll be two nurses that come to the property, not at the same time, but on 12-hour shifts, one for a 12-hour shift replaced by another on a 12-hour shift.
And these nurses are of a level of...
This level of nursing is not under our control.
But if a doctor is needed...
What you're getting at is the people coming to the property regardless of what the...
Right.
Whether they're RN, CNA, or LPN.
I was just wondering, like pharmacies, is there going to be pharmacy deliveries?
I believe so, based on the application.
Hairdressers?
I'm going to ask you defer these questions to Ms. Thomas because I don't know the specifics as well as she will.
Okay.
Please.
You'll need to reopen.
Do you want to reopen the public hearing then? Do we have to do that to bring Ms. Thomas?
Yeah, you're going to take further testimony on this.
I thought she was coming back up. That's when she sat down, we thought we'd see her again. That was my impression. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Am I wrong on that? I can not, but if you tell me...
Well, I think we want to be fair with people. I don't... Does the board have any objection to reopening the public hearing? How much do we have to go back to?
You just need to reopen for purposes of her making testimony and answering questions.
Give me a nod if you have an issue with opening it back to the public hearing. Okay, we're going to reopen the public hearing for the purpose of hearing Ms. Thomas.
So do you ever have to call in additional nurses to your facility?
No. They're just, it's one nurse per shift.
And they qualify for all the uses for getting shots or whatever would be necessary?
Yes, exactly.
How about if a doctor is needed?
Doctor, Dr. Lee basically only visits maybe once every month or every two months. She doesn't come every week. She doesn't come every day, you know.
As needed, I would assume.
As needed.
Right. So it would be hard to say how often.
Yes.
But yes, okay. A pharmacist?
Pharmacist comes once a month.
The barber?
I have a barber. We do everything ourselves.
There's no hairstylist or...
We do all the hair. I'm a hairstylist. That's the fun part.
So if there are any psychiatrists or anything like that needed, you do not supply that service? Other than, of course, your own family groceries, food is not brought in, but you do have to go to the grocery stores for the additional trips to feed the additional people. How about oxygen? Is that brought in for it?
Sometimes oxygen is brought in.
So there'd be oxygen delivered. How about medical supplies?
Medical supplies is brought in sometime, like beds and things like that, bedside commode.
Is there any ministers or religious services or supply?
We let everybody do their own religious services. Sometimes they come, and you know, maybe a family member might come and pick them up, take them out to church or something.
So there's a few trips. Hospice, you already said, we heard that you have things like that. And manicurist was a neighbor.
We do that, too.
Do that on there. And then other than that, we do have the workers that work there for us. I just wanted to get an idea of them all. Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions to Ms. Thomas while she's up here?
I have a question for Ms. Thomas while she's up.
Mr. Wilma, sir.
Ms. Thomas, you're aware that as a result of the filing of this protest petition, that it would require seven favorable votes, and tonight we only have eight aldermen present. Frequently be the practice of our Board of Zoning Adjustment where we would only have four or five, that we would give the applicant a chance to request a continuance so there could be a vote when there's a full board present. And I just wanted to make sure on the record that you would want to indicate to the board if you want to have the vote tonight, or would you request a continuance to a subsequent meeting where we perhaps would have a full board of 10?
What would be the count? Seven, at least seven votes?
There will still be seven votes required if this was a valid protest petition.
I think I will go with it. I have, I mean, I've said my prayers, and I want to continue on.
You would go ahead tonight, knowing you need seven of eight votes?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions to Ms. Thomas?
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to try again to close the public hearing.
I had one.
Mr. Mock has one. Ms. Thomas, Mr. Mock decided he has a question here for you.
Yeah. I just had a question. When I stopped by today, who greeted me at the door?
One of my workers.
One of your workers?
Yes.
And what was her name? I didn't get her name today.
Tiara. Tiara Rodriguez.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
We'll try it. Thank you. Can we go back to closing the public hearing? Back to board discussion. Okay, we're going to require a motion. This is the second reading, so we've got a motion as a possibility, or we continue with the discussion? Did she actually do what? Read what? Yeah, you did read the motion or read the action, second reading, yeah. Okay. Mr. Mock?
We're still in discussion?
We're in discussion, sir.
Okay.
Discussion or motion?
Mr. Benson, okay, in December 2010, staff became aware of Ms. Thomas's operating an assisted living facility at 9704, 9706 without required land use approvals or state license. How'd you all find out about this?
Ms. Thomas came to our office because the state had contacted her about, or investigated the facility and had contacted her, and she had begun working with the state to obtain her state license. The state requires local land use approval, which caused her to come to our office.
Okay. And how long was, had she been operating?
According to what she told us, five years, since 2005.
Okay.
Mr. Pardue? Okay. I need something here. I need further discussion or I need a motion action on this item? Mr. Ertz?
Not knowing the count or the numbers on as far as seven votes, if it's a motion to deny, does it take seven votes or is it a motion to approve that gets denied? How is the preferred...
Appropriate motion should be a motion to approve.
I think the general course is a favorable motion to be acted upon. Ms. White, oh, Mr. Ertz?
And if there is no motion to approve?
Then we'll go to Ms. White.
Thank you. I just want to point out to my fellow board members that we do have a comprehensive plan that talks about mixed uses in areas of the city, including residential. We've talked about the things that we want our city to become, and we've looked at other cities. I have seen great cities that have retail sitting right in the middle of a residential area, and quite frankly, I would love to have that in my neighborhood. While I don't have two facilities together, I'm looking at the traffic counts that were shown here, and they're not high-traffic counts on a daily basis. My feeling is that based on what we've done as a city and our zoning ordinances, that this fits what we've said is allowable in the city of Raytown. And that being said, I would make a motion to approve this application.
Second?
Ms. White has made the motion to approve, second by Mr. Hamilton. Continued discussion on item number four. Mr. Azier.
I do believe that we need to take in consideration the residents who lived there before this application was brought to us, and in most cases, they lived there for many years without such a facility. And I think that their feelings of their neighborhood and their homes should be given equal credit.
Mr. Ertz?
I think she prob, you do provide excellent care. I think that it's not the care, it's the where this is that I do have some issues with. Many neighbors in this neighborhood have lived there a long time as a single-family residential. We do have multiple other grades of zoning. I think we have a city staff who could find many properties that would fit a bill better than a neighborhood, and having two facilities next door to each other tends to go against, you know, our... you know, our intensity that we would have. You know, so we go into whether or not having one business after another is a, what would we say? The, intensifies the usage of the area to where it is not becoming a single-family neighborhood anymore. Whether it be the traffic or just the idea of having a normal family setting across the street with the normal family uses. Again, I think there's, would be wonderful places in town for this to locate it. I think that we need to watch how intense we put anything in any of our neighborhoods to concentrate a lot of businesses in the neighborhoods, whether it was, if it was one retail or one business, you know, it would be different than having two. And this is two homes. This is two addresses, although the use tonight is just for the one. I'm saying that, what I'm saying is having the 24-hour facility next to a daytime facility is increasing the intensity of the neighborhood towards a business use. You know, from a traffic endpoint, it is going to increase. And I did notice that the traffic study was done 10 years ago, before Carnegie Park's entrance was moved, which probably has changed the traffic study. I do have, I do not have issues with how she runs. I met her. She's a very nice lady. I believe the people there are happy. I just wish maybe we could find her a better place for this in our city. I would like to keep our neighborhoods as a single, a zone, single-family neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood. That's all I have for now.
Mr. Pardue?
I guess in that, with what you said there, my response or question for you would be, where do you see this kind of facility better placed than where they're requesting?
I would say, you know, in a multiple, I believe what John would know the levels of it, but we would have places where you would have, like apartment-house complexes, where you have multiple families coming in, fourplexes, things of that nature as a neighborhood, where you're naturally going to have more traffic in the individual people there. It's a different use for that thing. Or in, we also have in Raytown, many care facilities that are actually zoned for this specifically. Edgewood Manor, I can't think of that. I'm sure there's more than that. Hidden Lakes, I believe, has a facility there. There's a couple over on 83rd Street. If we're telling these people had to go in, to these business owners there, had to go and open up a business that was in that type of an area, they had to have it zoned when they built their businesses, we're not, we're not holding this to the same standard, I guess. We're letting this go into residential neighborhoods. So I do think there are areas in town that are already zoned for this type of care, and perhaps that would be a better fit.
I guess what I'm not really understanding is that, because this is like a home care facility. It's not really like a Edgewood Manor or some of the other areas that you were talking about. So I guess with the traffic study that we've seen, that doesn't see a huge increase, and then also the fact that, you know, if we are going to be creative about how we house older folks and stuff like that, that, I mean, we're either saying that we're going to accept this kind of treatment or facility, or we're not. I mean, I think that's really what it comes down to, though.
I think that's exactly it. I think this is the opening, in my mind, of having multiple care facilities throughout the city next door to each other. And I think it, and I think it does increase the traffic. I think when we're looking at it, not increasing the traffic at this one spot, but it's also next door to someplace that increased the traffic a little. Plus, you have somebody who lives there normally that has the normal traffic of the house. There's, there could be multiple traffic going up and down. We don't know what the traffic would be, being there was a 10-year-old traffic study, for one. And two is, the nature of the business means that I don't think in any given morning, you know how many people you're going to have to call that day. But I do not think it, I don't believe it to be in character of a single-family residential neighborhood.
Mr. Azier?
Just to answer your question, we do have a number of residential homes that already exist in current commercial areas, areas that are zoned for commerce, all the way up Raytown Road, 63rd Street, Blue Ridge Cut Off. So yes, they do exist, and there's really quite a few of them. Secondly, we do, we do have an ordinance that says that you can't have two facilities that close, but in this case, it says two houses equal one facility, which to me clarifies it as being pretty commercial. When you take two residents and block them and say they're just one, it's not just a single home. It's a pretty good-sized facility. And what says you couldn't have three, or four, or five, or six next to each other, they then would be all just one facility. So to me, this is pretty commercial in a residential area.
Okay. Very good. We've got a motion and a second. Saying no further discussion. Ask clerk to call the vote.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
No.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
No.
Alderman Mock?
No.
Alderman Azier?
No.
Alderman Ertz?
I'm going to move on to now the second reading of item number five, and ask the clerk to perform the second reading, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 13, Article 11 of the City Code relating to nuisance and amending Section 13-146.1A, Section 13-146.1B, Section 13.146.2, thereof to alter the regulation of dismantled and operable junked and unlicensed vehicles in areas used for purposes other than residential.
Mr. Benson, as our acting community development director, would you like to address this item?
Just very briefly, as Ms. Lynn talked about at your last meeting, this is an amendment that relates to the inoperable, or unlicensed vehicles in non-residential areas, addressing an issue that was discussed at the June 7th meeting. At this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I think Ms. Lynn went through, walked through it pretty thoroughly last meeting, so...
Any questions to Mr. Benson on item five?
Mr. Mayor, I would note to the alderman for the record that, thanks to the good work of our city clerk, she noted that there was a typographical change in Section 2 and renumbering of Section 4, 5, and 6. But as far as the body of the bill, both in the title and the contents of what you're hearing, it's exactly the same, and therefore does not need to be amended. But if you noticed, there was some typographical change. Bless some good proofreading by our city clerk.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay. Discussion on item number five. Mr. Van Busker.
Well, I'm glad that we have addressed this issue. I think it's one that we needed to address for a long time, and it, if there's something in the ordinance that doesn't work for us, it's certainly not etched in stone. We can always go back and make adjustments if we, if we need to. But I appreciate the fact that staff has put this together, and I think it's something that we really need to do. Thank you.
Mr. Pardue?
I'd like to make a motion we approve.
Second?
Mr. Pardue's got the motion to approve, item number five, seconded by Mr. Hamilton. We are on the second reading. Saying no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on item number five, please.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Item number six, please.
An ordinance establishing a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials in the city of Raytown, Missouri.
Ms. Henry, as our city clerk, would you care to elaborate on this item?
This is kind of like a housekeeping item that we do every year. It's actually only due every other year to keep us on track so that no one gets fallen through the cracks. We've decided as a city to do this every year, so we bring it before you every year for adoption.
Okay. Discussion on item, item number six. It is the first reading, so we won't require a vote tonight. No discussion? We'll dispense with discussion on item number six, and...
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Azier has motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Pardue. All in favor, signify by saying aye.